Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 11, 2017 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. We have our regular scheduled, our regular board minutes for December 12, 2016, for approval. So moved on second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Public participation?
No, Mr. Chairman, no one has signed it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Let's move on to item 3A, request from John Makati Jr., Town Treasurer, to transfer $457,725 from the town's capital projects account at the Savings Bank to the town's general fund so that the following bond payment can be paid. Galvin Middle School interest, $446,725; Athletic Fields interest, $11,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. Let's move on. We're going to skip over item 3B and hold that to the end. We're going to move to item 3C, please. Request from Sharon Gillie, Director of the Lucius B.B. Memorial Library, to accept and expend the gift of gifts to the library in the amount of $1,920 from various donors with thanks.
So moved.
Moved?
Second.
Seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item 3D, we have in our possession some information to the membership, the selectmen, from the chairman, to work with the town administrator's upcoming review. What I would like everyone to do, please, is to take a moment to review this at your own leisure. We ask you to do two things, though. We ask you to set up a meeting with the town administrator, to sit with him and discuss, and to contact the chair before the January 30th meeting. So if you can do that, please, it will speed along the process of doing the town administrator's review. Any questions?
So deadline of January 30th?
Yes.
That's when our meeting is?
That's when our next meeting is. So the meet to discuss the results on the 30th individually with Mr. Mayo prior to that, and then a conversation with the chair before the 30th as well. Everything all set?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, thank you very much. Let's move on, please, to item 4A. Our next issue before us is the change of manager at the Sheridan.
Steve Merrill.
Steve Merrill, could you please? Chanelle? Have a seat up front. Mr. Merrill, you're before us, seeking two votes. One is to approve Chanelle as a manager, and the other to make M-E-E-R-A-L-L-C as the company doing business as four-point Sheridan?
Correct.
Okay, would you like to continue from there?
Sure, yes, we have a new ownership management company, they do both, which is Merrill LLC. So we're transitioning that from Interstates, which was on the license previously, and also the manager that was there before on the license isn't long in there. Chanelle's a longstanding manager at the hotel, eight years, nine years?
Been there ten and a half.
Thanks. Ten and a half years.
There you go.
And so we wanted to transfer it over to Chanelle, and she's the food and beverage manager as well.
Very good.
So it makes sense.
Questions from the board?
No.
Hearing none?
Make one point that Chanelle has been all vetted.
Finger printed.
Finger printed and all good for the police department, so, thank you.
So from the board, I will need two separate votes, please. One would be to approve Chanelle Mansfield as manager on the license.
So moved.
Moved?
Second.
Seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Then we need another motion to have M-E-E-R-A-L-L-C as the new managing company doing business as four-point Sheridan.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice day.
So let us move forward then with item 4B. We have a request from Noel Bailey, Chairperson of the Scholarship Foundation, for a one-day liquor license on February 11, 2017, for the 25th Annual Trivia Team Challenge in the Parish Hall at St. Joseph's Church. I will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Can we add that we'll waive the fee?
Certainly.
Certainly.
Thank you. So it's removed and seconded with waiving of the fee as well, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Personnel and appointments. Item 5A, designation of animal control officer, Kenneth Stage.
Isn't he already the?
It's, he's.
An annual appointment by the selectman.
Oh, it has to be annual, okay.
Statutorily, I think.
Yes.
Yep.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have appointment to the council on aging. We have two candidates. I'd like to make a motion to move the slate. Have someone make the motion to move the slate.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayo, I think we're going to turn the table over to you now to go back to item 3D, I mean 3B, which is the fiscal year 2018 initial budget discussion.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board may know, and I know you guys love my PowerPoints, I did put a PowerPoint for you and the people at home, we are getting into budget time, and actually, at our next meeting, on January 30th, we will actually bring the first budgets to you. But I'd like to give a little bit of overview of where I think we are, and where we think we are, and where we hope to be. And I will tell you on the outset is that we have been, really, for the last, oh, five, six, seven, eight years now, we do have a very good plan that we've put together, this board, Finance Committee, we've really mapped out what we project will happen between now and fiscal year 2024, 2025. I will tell you that we are staying on that plan, which I think is very helpful to the community. It's produced, I think, good results and good reserves, and us able to live within our means. So with no further ado, let me go through this here. I always like to start where we are. We have a little over $3 million in the stabilization fund, we have free cash of around $7 million. We have the FinCom reserve of $300,000. We have an OPEB account of $8 million, which I think is an envy of us and a lot of other communities around us, that being other post-employment benefits that will pay for retiree health insurance in the future. And like, we have to put money away for pensions by the state law, we also will have to put money away for health insurance benefits in the future, too. Right now, we need to note it on our balance sheet, but we will be held in a few years to have a schedule, so we're doing a good job moving forward. And the water sewer reserve is 1.8 million. This is really a great story, and by actually funding OPEB and funding it the way we are, we really are lowering our potential liability probably by over $66 million when you run this out forward. So it's actually a great thing, and the board should take great pride that they've actually, every year, consistently budgeted to do that, along with working with the Finance Committee. So all in all, we have, you know, close to $21 million in reserves. I always talk about budget priorities, and I talk to you, talk to the board all the time, we talked about what are our priorities, and a lot of them don't change, but I think there are nuances on them. Public safety, number-one priority, police and fire, what we need to do to keep our citizens safe, and we know what's happening in the world out there, and I am very proud of the mission-specific programs that this board has supported over the years, the crisis intervention team, the school resource offices, domestic violent protection. We're doing a lot with, we have a fire prevention officer, a few years ago, we didn't have that. This board added that back into the budget, so we have done a lot. Roads and sidewalks, we'll talk a little bit about that as we go forward, but we have tried to increase the amount of money to Chapter 90, which comes from the state. We add $250,000 a year. I will say that we are going to be perhaps coming forward, working with the Finance Committee, with a bond, do even more roads within two and a half. I think when you drive around, there are a number of our roads that do need a lot of work. You know, frankly, not was, a lot was not done for years, the state did not give us the money to do it, and we try to coordinate that with the MLD when they're doing gas and electric work, or when we're doing water and sewer work. The worst thing we can do is repave a road and then a year later have to go in and put in a new gas line, that just drives us crazy. So we try to coordinate that. We've been working very closely with the MLD, looking at quadrants of cities and of the town that needs to be done, and I think we have a pretty good plan going forward. That's been a great cooperation between the MLD and our DPW department. Drainage, Mr. Donaco's favorite. We do have a drainage study that was presented to this board, I think, in the spring, and there will be items implemented there. Capital improvements, from, you know, cars, to computers, to roofs, to windows, I'm very proud of the fact that we have maintained over $2 million a year for the last few years for capital improvements. Again, we have a schedule that will come forward to this board. I remember six or seven years ago, when we were scrambling to do half a million dollars, so we quadrupled that. I throw a big catch-all into business development, and I think that is really working to enhance our business in the downtown, in what we consider the downtown, the Albion Arts Corridor, Greenwood, not just so with beautification, but trying to do more, and I think you're going to hear a lot more about that over the next few years, it's going to be a real item that we're going to push to, again, get people to come here, to take a part with our businesses and our restaurants and our shops, and I think you're going to see a lot of good things coming here. Contracts, I am currently in negotiations with three of our unions, police, fire, and supervisors. Those will be coming forward, and so we have to keep in mind that we have to make sure that we have money in the budget to cover those as well. I think we've been great strides in recreation activities, I think the, when we do finally really get management of the civic center, you're going to see that explode. I think, personally think, and I think I share, I think Selectmen Longo shares my optimism in this area, that hopefully that'll actually be a moneymaker for the town, and it's nice to bring that back and work on that through here. I think another item that we are working on, we've done a lot more with social media and messaging, and I think you're going to see that through the budget process as well. So we do have a few policies on this board. One is that, one is that we want to have, make sure that we have sufficient free cash to take care of anything that happens. And a few years ago, we put this together, and we think that we should have free cash of 8% of our operating revenue, which means that we should have about $6 million in free cash, we have seven. It's pretty good, this is after the fall town meeting. Stabilization, we should have a minimum of 2 million, we have three, so we have more than that. Reserves, we are right on there with about half a percent of our operating revenue, and when you pull out SBA in Chapter 70, we are right there with $300,000. So what do I know right now as I put the budget together? Well, really, not too much. I know what our tax levy is, that's pretty easy, I know what last year, last year taxes in, and in this case, we increased that by 2.5%. Query whether the board does that or not, last year, we were lucky enough to go with 1.5%, but I do know that number right now. State aid, I don't know what state aid is going to be. In fact, I will get a better idea next week at the MMA convention, but everything I've been reading, and I follow a lot of things of the state, is that a lot of people think that state aid is going to be going up, maybe by as much as 3%. I, in figuring my budget for next year, was much more conservative, I put state aid as an increase of 1.8%, rounded off nice to 9.7 million. Hopefully, I'll be proved wrong at the MMA meeting, hopefully, it's a little bit higher. I should get that actually figure on Saturday morning, usually, it's Friday morning, but Saturday morning, because the governor will be addressing the convention on Saturday morning. So that is nebulous, but I think that'll be around that area. SBA, this is the money that we get back from the state for the Woodville and the Dahlberg School. That number I know. I know that that's what it's going to be, that's a contract, okay? That number is actually going to go away in the next few years, because actually, in the next few years, the payment on the bonds in Woodville and Dahlberg are going to go away. So that'll be a good thing, because the payments will go away as well. Local receipts, local receipts are everything that we get, from rental fees to excise taxes to meals taxes, hotel taxes, things like that. This has been an area that has really shown over the last few years to come in much higher than I very conservatively estimate, and this is actually a bone of contention if Dan Schenon, the FinCom, is watching tonight, he tells me that I'm very low, and that I owe him a dinner, and I do, but this is how we, this is how we grow free cash, and the way I look at it is that I always want to underestimate on revenues, and if more comes in, that's great, and then it kind of all runs in, because you will see that we will be using, per our plan, free cash to balance the budget this year. Light department is what the light department pays the town in lieu of taxes, and the next one under it is free cash and available funds. Part of this is cemetery fees and what have you, but the other part is free cash. Remember, last year, we used around $2 million in free cash, but I can, I think free cash will go up this year, again, to, like I said, we had $7 million right now, I think it'll go back up to an 8.5, 9 million. We'll use a portion of that to bring that back down, because we shouldn't be hoarding free cash, we should use it to balance the budget and help the taxpayer out, and that's all part of our plan. The last item on there is new growth. New growth is money in new taxation from new developments, and I'm very comfortable with this figure of $750,000. I actually think that when you think of what's going on around town, that probably, that number will probably go up a little higher, that kind of depends on when things are built. But we have some nice, big projects in town, some with a commercial component, and there are more on the horizon that I'm being, that I'm hearing about, so adding these all up together, I think we seem to be in pretty, pretty good shape going forward. And you look at, we're going to have revenues of about $87 million coming in. Now, what are we going to pay it on, we're going to spend it on? Okay, operating budgets, I'm estimating, and I've talked to my department heads and my senior staff, roughly $58 million in operating budgets, that's a modest increase from last year, less than 4%, that's what I'm figuring on. Fixed costs, fixed costs, the big bugboob there is health insurance, which is about $11 million of that. I am holding health insurance next year, or I'm projecting health insurance costs of the GIC at an estimate of, an increase of 5%. That is probably very high, but I would rather be pleasantly surprised when that comes down a little bit. Capital expenditures, 2.1 million like last year, articles, about $2 million like last year, and debt service is roughly the same as last year, and that's what we use to pay our bonds on all of the items that we have in town, with the exception of the Galvin, which is, which is in an over, which is a debt exclusion. Other thing that I have in here for now is that I am projecting going up in our snow and ice account by $50,000, that's as of today. That may change when I come back to the board and make a recommendation to you with the DPW director. For years, our snow and ice account was at $293,500, crazy. We've been moving it up over time, it's at $750,000 now, which was very good last year. Couple of years ago, it wasn't so good, but no one was so good. I do think inching that up a little bit isn't a bad thing, because if it's not spent, guess what, it rolls back into the general fund. So again, rather be safe than sorry. Some other items that we see that we have in our budget every year is the overlay account. That is money that we actually put aside, because A, you never collect all the taxes that you bill, and people come in for abatements, so we actually put money aside each year to cover that. State and county assessments, this is what we get assessed for the count, by the state government for a lot of items, the big part of that is the MBTA, is for the, is for the train station. Cherry sheet offsets is actually money that goes directly to the library from the state, and that's kind of what the number was last year, so I keep it that year. Snow and ice overdraft is always a question mark, I don't know what that's going to be. If we have many more days like today this year, we'll be good, we haven't been hit too bad this year so far with snow, but remember, a couple of years ago, we had a snow and ice overdraft of over $1 million, as did everybody in that part of the year. Let's hope that doesn't happen. So my, as of today's date, anticipated expenses are 87.2, I have revenues at 87.0, so today, sitting today on January 11th, I'm looking at a, you know, a little bit of a deficit, having a $173,000 deficit in my mind here on January 11th, we haven't voted on any budget, is not anything that I'm overly concerned about, or anybody should be concerned about, we'll make that up in the process somehow. But kind of like to let you know where we are today and where we are going, where I think we are. Budget uncertainties, again, state aid, like I said, I don't know what's going to happen with state aid. I will tell you that some of the latest things that I'm reading are showing state revenues, you know, somewhere, increasing somewhere in the area of 2.94%. I held it at 1.8% for us. Governor Baker has said in the past that money to cities and towns will increase at the same amount that state revenues increase. So if that money goes a little higher, that's great for us, so we'll see what happens there, things, things change. Health insurance, I already mentioned health insurance. Again, I don't know where we're going to be, where we're going to be with that, that is, there's a lot of items to look at, not the least of which is what comes out of Washington, DC, because a lot of what comes out of Washington, DC actually goes to the state of Massachusetts to cover some of the math health costs. If that number goes down, or if things happen, will that change? I don't know, but we'll have to look at that and see, but I'm pretty comfortable holding 5% is probably high there. School priorities, we, as a community, have an agreement with the school department. A few years ago, we increased the school budget as a community by 11.4%. Part of that agreement was, going forward for the next few years, this being one of them, that the school department would be held to a 4% increase. I'm holding them to that in here. I've already met with the superintendent on that, she's great to work with, she's working very well with us, and she knows that that's part of the, kind of the part of the path that we have. Local receipts, I think they'll come in higher than I'm projecting, but it is an uncertainty. Snow and ice, a big uncertainty, as we talked about. We have a couple of buildings out there that we are weaving in to the process here, one is the Walton School, which the town did extend a feasibility study for, I think that will come forward in the spring town meeting. I've already met with Finance Committee on that, that will be rolled into our budget and be rolled into our debt service account, so that does seem to work. The other one is the public safety building, you know, a lot of people have talked about that. Selectwoman Hull has been adamant, we need to get, make sure that front area is manned all the time. That's going to take moving dispatch downstairs to do that, there's a cost involved in that, and we're looking at that, too, as well as some other areas in that building that need to be taken care of, and I think Selectman Santos did a tour there, and there are things that need to be done. So all in all, I am very comfortable with this, with the budget that we have now, and of course, the new administration in Washington, DC. I think it's a, it's a good first step, just so you know a little bit of my process, is I do my thing on the budget, how I do it one way, and Kevin Gill does his another way, and we kind of, we kind of meet in the middle, we back into it, and both of us are very much within, you know, a few thousand dollars of each other, so it's a good check that on us, and I feel very confident and comfortable going in to this, I don't think there is another shoe to drop, so to speak. I think that we can continue to give the people of Wakefield good services with, I think, which is one of the better tax bills around. No one likes to pay taxes, but if you look what's going on in some of our neighbors, we're pretty much ahead, so. Mr. Chairman, that's all I had, so I am open for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the initial budget discussion. I'm going to go roundtable and see if anybody has any comments to make at this current time.
No, I have no comments at this time. I have to digest some more of what I see there.
Absolutely, my door is always open to go over all this, you know, this is a long way to go.
I'm happy that the Walton School is getting looked at very seriously, and goodness knows there's other schools, and we know the Greenwood School, Walton, they're in trailers, there's, you know, there's one tiny little room that serves as about 12 functions, so I, you know, I don't think anyone's talking about building a new school, which is making it serviceable for the students, so I think that's great.
And actually, that plan has been, is pretty far along, that has gone back to teachers.
Absolutely, great.
And the teachers have looked at it, I think it will be rolled out to the community next, and that is, you know, waiting, that's, the school department will be doing that in the future, but that is kind of woven in there, so.
Yeah, perfect, but thank you, that, you make the budget so easy to understand every year, and I think it's smart underestimating certain numbers, because then, you know, when we're pleasantly surprised even by a little bit, it just makes us look, you know, smart and smartly conservative.
Thank you. Again, Tony?
I just want to thank Steve for putting this together, and I echo Phyllis's sentiments about the public safety building, that lobby should be staffed at all times.
That's, I agree with you, Peter, that's one of the things that, I know we have a lot to do, but I'll be happy when they do something about that safety building.
Yeah, and as a 1975 graduate of the Greenwood School, but, you know, we do need to look at that long-term to, yeah, get that up. I don't think much has changed in that building in, you know, 40-something years.
Peter?
Steve, that was great, I agree with everyone's comments, I think that Anne had some good comments about the fact that it's easy to understand it when we see it on the PowerPoint, but there's still a lot of question marks going forward, obviously, depends on the snowfall, budgeting is very, very tricky, so obviously, it's a good start, and I agree with everything on it.
That's, we are just at the starting point.
Yeah, I know, I know, so there's really no need to question anything else, this is a good start.
I remember one year at the MMA convention, when Governor Patrick came and gave this presentation to us on Friday, and how we were going to get state aid, and this was going to happen, and we're all walking there, we're feeling pretty good, and then Saturday morning, the chairman of the Ways and Means Committee came in, which we think was Representative Murphy from Burlington, same, same party, same party, came in and said, "I knew you guys all heard from the governor yesterday, don't believe a word he said, you're getting none of that money." It's like the mood went right out of the room, so.
Yeah.
But it is, it is very interesting, and hopefully, we'll get, we'll get some news consistent with what I think, and a little bit better, and it'll be, it'll be helpful. I still think we're under the gun on Chapter 70, I didn't talk about that, I'll leave that for the school committee, but we do not get, in my opinion, our fair share per student under Chapter 70.
No, we don't.
That was something that this board spoke to our delegation about, about a month ago, so hopefully, they heard that. Mr. Mullin, any comments?
No.
Well, Steve, as I always say, when you do this, I am amazed at, when everything is said and done, how close you actually are to giving us the actual figures, so I praise you for what you do and how you do and come up with these numbers. Two real quick questions, though, when we talk about new growth, when is the new growth actually given to us? At what point, when the project is completed?
Well, projects really are, well, there may be more of it then, but there is new growth January 1 on what is going on as well, so there's always a lag in new growth, you know, from when it's complete and when it comes in.
So we get it in piecemeal?
We get, we will get it in piecemeal, yes.
Okay, okay, no, I thought it came. No, I thought it came all at once.
I get, I get the new, I, we get the new growth number September, October, in that, in that timeframe.
Okay, okay. We currently have dealings with Verizon right now. Is that going to affect anything as far as numbers?
Oh, you mean the Verizon?
Case with the?
Case with Verizon, no. Actually, the Verizon case appears that that is going to be settled very favorably, in my opinion, to the cities and towns. And this board may recall that this board actually authorized our joining with a number of other cities and towns and actually hiring a attorney to handle that. That has really, really looks good. That has paid multiple dividends and great job done by Director of Assessments, Victor Santinello, who really brought all of the different assessors in to Wakefield. We had, we had a couple of meetings in Wakefield. I got to meet a lot of them. That looks like that's going to be well within, way under what we had could have been catastrophic. So it's going to be very manageable, very good. And within our overlay accounts, it's already there.
Excellent. That's good news. Anybody else have any further comments regarding the budget? Steve, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let us continue then with other items. We have correspondence in your package, a letter from Massachusetts School Building Authority. There's also a letter from the Massachusetts State Lottery Commission. I believe that has to do with a Keno location. The letter from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts seeking request for proposals. At this time, we can go roundtable with comments. Phyllis?
Yeah, I have two things that I want to say after listening to our town administrator. I do not think that people really understand how much work it entails and how much a town administrator has to do to bring us all this information. You know, you sit here and he gives the presentation, but if only people would understand how much goes into that. And I think he does a tremendous job about giving us the information we need. And my other second thing is, I really want to thank Rick Stinson and the DPW. They did a fantastic job with clearing the streets, letting the people know. I'm really proud of what they had done. I've gotten all kinds of comments and keeping the skies off. I know some of them got towed. They deserve to be towed. And Rick Stinson and the DPW did a great job.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Just a couple of comments. I want to let people know that the, the proposal to build a hockey rink, two sheets, is moving forward, that our interested groups have met with the consulting company we hired and they've had great meetings. There's been good input and I know there's a lot of folks out there, not naysayers, but folks saying, you know, "I'll believe it when I see it," but this is, we've never gone this far with this. So it's exciting. And all, all the feedback has been great so far and we're going forward, which is wonderful. And then secondly, just want to remind folks that Wakefield, the Human Rights Commission is hosting the first unity celebration on Martin Luther King Day at the Galvin at 10:00 AM. And it's from 10 to 11, it's a quick hour, but I think it's a wonderful thing for our town to do. So that's it.
Thank you, Anne. Tony.
Just this Saturday night, there's the July 4 fundraiser for, at the Elks. So there's also, might be a football game on as well. So if you have some time, please come down and support the July 4 Committee. Secondly, just a quick update on the Americal Civic Center. Steve, myself and Dan McGrath met with the DPW and some members of the board last Friday. We discussed the day-to-day operations and, you know, how they do things down there. We toured the building, discussed some of the long-term improvement projects, such as a new floor. There's a lot going on, there's a lot of positive energies going on. The DPW was aware, a lot of the vendors that they use, so it's a lot of positive things going on. And there's a lot of energy and synergy in that area with the two athletic fields, the civic center taking over. And I think that the growth potential for new revenue in the town is up there with that. Thank you.
Very good. Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple things. First, I had had a couple of calls from some citizens in town and thanking the board for the dog park. Congratulations on your efforts to establish this great place and space. There's a couple notes, though, about naming the dog park. Now, it appears that, I should just read this little paragraph here, but I know Steve May was suggesting Mayo Park, but I think.
That's a joke, that's a joke, just for the record, that's a joke.
It's an inside joke. Now it's outside. Since every Wakefield park and field has been named, I should tell you who this is from. Jane Diaderio, it's a sign, Diaderio. And she's been in town for a long time, also on the Board of Assessors, and she said nice things about the dog park, loves it. But since every Wakefield park has a field that's been named after a prominent citizen, she's suggesting that we name the park in honor of Esther Noel, the founder of Paws. She was a tireless advocate for all animals on a personal level, provided comforting perspective when her dog was diagnosed with bone cancer. So she's suggesting that name, but wants it out to the board that maybe we have a contest or we just have a suggestion board or some, something we can discuss later. But she was, was very excited about, you know, maybe having Esther Noel as part of that and naming the dog park. Secondly, the dog park during warmer times and the grass is gone, there's a lot of mud that's going to be taking place. So in the spring, we'll take care of that, so don't worry about that. Hopefully, not that it snows necessarily, but maybe it'll be a little smoother sailing when it's a little colder so that we won't have any issues. But also some benches inside for some people that need benches while they're talking to the dogs. And so lastly, one quick comment on, a couple of calls on a second water meter. So if I could add that maybe to the agenda, minutes for a future meeting, the second meter, a lot of citizens are saying that it's come before, but nothing's really come of it and I just wanted to explore that more. And money-wise, so.
I think it's, things have come of it, we voted it down. I mean, explored it and talked about it and there's really strong reasons why it's not, but I'm, we're happy.
Okay.
I'd say as a board, we should be happy to talk about it again.
Yeah, even to talk to folks on TV about what we think is the right thing to do. But at least they're bringing it up and I think it's a valid question. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mullin.
Nothing, thanks.
Mr. Mayor. I've said quite enough, Mr. Chairman. I really, again, want to thank Mr. Mayor for his presentation tonight and I want to thank the board for all their input. I have nothing else to say other than I want to take a motion to adjourn.
The motion.
Moved and seconded and discussions, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you very much and good night, everyone.